Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The time being seven o'clock. And now call the order this annual town meeting for the Town of Upton for May 3rd, 2018. Madam Town Clerk, is the warrant legal?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, the warrant's basically according to the bylaws of the Town of Upton and the general laws of the Town of Upton.
Thank you very much. I'd like to have the selection chairman to offer me to come forward so we can have a moment's silence.
If you would all please stand, please do not leave your flag. Please remain standing. My flag will be raised to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If we could all please remain standing and if we could have a moment of silence for all those citizens and friends of Upton we've lost over the past year. Thank you.
Alright, so we have a list of visitors here. I'll read their names and then I'll ask for a motion to accept them. Dennis Westgate, DGW Director, State Representative David Meradian, Town Councilwoman Goldberg, Director of Elder and Social Services Janice Newwitten, Tom Prior, Michelle Stanford, Jack Seamus, Lily Seamus. I assume that those are young folks who are here and they're in the visitor section, I assume, over there. That's great, I like to have young kids here. Matthew Batstow, Library Director, Andrew St. George, Recreation Director, Kenny Costa, Derek Brindisi, Kenny Costa Town Commissioner, Brindisi Town Manager, Jay Byer from the Town of Mendon, he's involved with the school system, Dr. Fitzpatrick, Valley Tech Superintendent, Will Marquise, and Nick Hurd. Is there a motion to accept those visitors?
So far.
Second, moved in second and any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. All those visitors are welcome to sit with us. Dr. Rooscheck? I don't know if he's here yet.
He's here.
Well, I'm sorry about... Oh, thank you.
Your line is well.
Just walked in the door, I just... Oh, look at this. Dr. Rooscheck, very good. Josh Pridey and Paul Mashen. A motion to accept those visitors. Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. And obviously, just to remind the visitors, that you can't vote where everyone else does. Thank you very much. I think we've got one more. Two more, thank you. Let's see, from Blueberry Lane, Sahil Shah, and Wendy Hodge from Dogwood Drive. Motion for them?
So far.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we're all set with the visitors. Now, I'd like to thank all the tellers, clerks, cable vision, the police department, and Middletown Regional for setting things up so that we could have the meeting here tonight. Want to ask everybody, this time, you see this device? All of you? Maybe most of you have something like this? That is fine, you can have it in the hall. You must put it on vibrate or off. Thank you very much, so it doesn't make noise during the meeting. If you feel the need to make a phone call, you just step outside, make your phone call, and then come back in. But we need to keep the town meeting flowing in a way where we don't have lots of interruptions. Thank you. Alright, do we have any first-time attendees here at the town meeting? Alright, please stand up and let's give you all a big hand. Thanks for coming. And I hope to see you all again at the next town meetings in the future. Good, alright. General format of the meeting. We have a warrant that's been posted for two weeks. It was posted at the town hall, it was posted at the library, and at the post office. In addition to that, it was on the town's website. Copies of those warrants were available for the last couple of weeks, so that you could pick those up, even though there's been a change this year where we don't have the election before, like we did in the past. So you had to take on the responsibility on your own to pick up the warrant ahead of time. And basically, a warrant is simply a list of the things that we're going to talk about tonight, okay? So if we move through, you'll see how the process works, okay? What will happen is, as we have a particular article that's been made into a motion on the floor, it'll show up on the screen at that point in time. I will then ask a person to make a motion from the article that's on the warrant. After that, I'll ask there to be a second, and then if necessary, I'll ask the finance committee to make a recommendation on that, if it's of a financial nature. Or I may ask other boards, the capital budget committee, planning board, community preservation committee, to make recommendations as necessary, depending upon what that particular motion is. Then after that, the person who moved the particular motion will then have an opportunity to speak on the motion if he feels his O V D's. They always have the first bite at the apple, essentially. And then after that, I'll look it up, the questions from anybody. If you do have a question, it's real simple, you raise your hand, you come up to the microphone, say, "Mr. Moderator, I'll ask for your name and address the first time you speak." That way we know that you are a resident here in town. After that, you don't need to say it again if you come up a second or third time. And then, you simply either ask a question if you have a question about the motion on the floor, or you can make a statement about the motion on the floor. That's essentially what you're going to do. There's other technical things that can be done, but essentially, that's what happens when somebody comes to the microphone to speak. You have a question to ask, and you do that. Now, the other thing I need to talk about is the appropriate, I shall say, manner of speaking at the microphone. So for example, let's say a friend of yours, say his name is Joe, and he made a comment about the motion that's on the floor, and you just don't agree with what Joe had to say, right? So you're next in line, I call on you, you give me your name and address, you can't say, "Joe, you're cruelish about that. This is what it's supposed to be." You can't do that. What you do is you say, "I disagree with the previous speaker's comment on that particular motion, and this is my opinion on that." And that's how you do it, okay? I know most all of you have heard that before, we just have to keep remembering to do that. You don't want to get into a back-and-forth conversation with somebody, and you especially don't want to talk someone down. They have every right to speak here at the town meeting as you have, and everyone who speaks at the microphone has to be respected with regard to what they have to say. That's the only way that this is going to work. Okay. Lastly, should be clear, but I'll say it anyways, only one person can speak at a time, so that we don't get into that back-and-forth. You will never interrupt the speaker unless maybe you can't hear the speaker, you can't hear me, you can say, "Mr. Moderator, I can't hear the speaker." We'll get the message, we'll have him get closer to the microphone. Oh, by the way, if you think you're going to have something to say, you might want to move closer to the microphone. That just makes the meeting move a little bit more quickly. So keep that in mind as the meeting goes on if you think you're going to say something. Alright, last thing, before I ask the finance committee to make some comments, is this. If for some reason, somebody's speaking at the microphone and they really are out of line, and I need to stop them, I go through this process. I say, "Sir and madam, stop speaking and step back to the microphone." If needed, I will then inform them of the infraction that has just occurred, and I will then ask them if they are able to continue, and they need to say yes. If they say no, then I'll just say, "Please stop." If they say yes, I'll be better this time, I'll give them a second chance. If the infraction continues, though, I'll then ask them to sit in their seat. If they don't sit in their seat, I'll ask them to leave the meeting. If they don't leave the meeting, I will ask the officer in the back to remove them from the meeting. I've been doing this 24 years now. I've only had, twice I've had to ask someone to step back from the microphone. I've never had to go beyond that. I want to keep it that way, okay? Town of Upton does a great job at being respectful for each other. Just continue to do that, and that's the way it should be, so thank you. Finance Committee, any particular comments that you have before we get into the whole budgetary process?
The only thing, Mr. Moderator, is that, as we, as explained in the brochure, the document here, there are a lot of lines got shifted from one department to another, and we did our best to make this kind of be self-explanatory. So, get any questions? When the time comes, if you want a further explanation, ask for the whole.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. Hopefully, you had a chance to look at it ahead of time. One of the good things about the way Upton works is that the finance committee always has their numbers ready at least a couple of weeks before the meeting. That gives you the opportunity to look it over, so that you're not thinking tonight about what's supposed to happen. Now, if you haven't done that, and you're going to do it tonight, fine, but we're going to move through it, the process, because you all have the time to look at this ahead of time. So I just want you to remember that. Okay, the next thing we have is, we're going to have what's called a consent, a consent calendar. What a consent calendar is, is we group articles together, articles that never have questions in the past, and they probably wouldn't have any questions, and we vote those as a block, okay? If for some reason, though, when I mention that particular article, if you do have a question, you can hold that particular article, and we then will deal with it in the appropriate time. Okay. So are there any questions before we begin? Alright, seeing none, let's start then. So, I need a motion for the grouping of the articles to be in the consent calendar. Mr. Fleming?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote by unanimous consent of the following articles that have not been requested hold. Those consent calendar articles being 1, 6, 7, and 8.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded, 1, 6, 7, and 8. I'll screen really quick what those are. 1 is the acceptance of the annual report, okay? 6 is the finance committee budget, and that's used, the reserve account that's used throughout the year, and that is to raise and appropriate, I believe, okay? Number 7 is reimbursement, no, I'm sorry, the town's obligation to the pension funds, okay? And Article 8 is, that's the reimbursement from the state for fixing up of the roads. So, does anybody want to hold any of those 4?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes?
Can we just clarify the funding sources for those?
Yes, thank you very much. That's in the motion cards. So, 6, 7, so, 7 is going to be raise and appropriate, excuse me, 6 is raise and appropriate. Article 7 is coming from three funds, the tax levy, $513,020, and $25,561 each from the water enterprise fund and from the wastewater enterprise fund. And then Article 8, it's, that's just the acceptance from the state, so that's no fund.
To borrow from the state.
I'm sorry, but Mr., oh, it's a grant from the state.
On the way to borrow.
To borrow, but then the state grants us the money, correct?
You borrow the money first.
That's right.
It's not the state to borrow.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes?
That, that article is a standard article, Chapter 95, it's just a majority vote.
Yes, that's good, yes, thank you, yeah, yeah, appreciate that. Okay, now, it's, it is a consent calendar, we've talked a little bit about it, but it's better to understand it before we move into that. So, since there were no holds, I ask that there be, all those in favor of Articles 1, 6, 7, and 8 being accepted by unanimous consent, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously, so those are done. The next is Article 2. Now, what Article 2 is, you need to get out your finance committee report, which is the one that looks like this, okay? So, so again, for those of you who've been here in the past, we go through basically groups of departments, and if you're new here, we're going to move through these pretty quickly. What's going to happen is this, you turn to the page, just page 1, and you see this, okay, like this. We're going to run through the departments. If you want to hold something, that's what ends up happening. So we'll go with the motion, and then I'll explain more better later. Thank you. Yeah?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to fix the salaries and compensation of all officers of the town as provided by Chapter 41, Section 108, Mass. General Law as amended. It's a raise and appropriate $21,505,82 to the freight expenses of town departments for the ensuing year. As set forth in the document entitled Finance Committee Report, Town of Upton, Massachusetts, Fiscal Year 2019 Budget Recommendation. For all those items not requested hold, and as amended, if applicable, by the vote of the town meeting, for those items requested, hold.
Second, moved in seconded. The town vote to fix salaries and compensations of all officers of the town as provided by Chapter 41, Section 108, Mass. General Law as amended, and to raise and appropriate $21,505,82 to the freight expenses of the departments for the ensuing year. As set forth in the document entitled Finance Committee Report, Town of Upton, Massachusetts, Fiscal Year 2019 Budget Recommendation, for all those items not requested hold, and as amended, if applicable, by the vote of the town meeting, for those items requested, hold. A minor detail, but I got to say it, because maybe someone else noticed it too. They see a period there after the 5. That should be a com, obviously, not a decimal point, because it's not $21,505, okay? So, just for anybody asked, alright. Do you have a question?
Shelley Cook, 23 Men's Street. I'm just having a question about the line items. Is it in there?
Like, there are things that you might want to hold, is what you're saying? Is that what you mean? Okay, so when we get to those departments, when I get there, you say hold, and then you tell me which, which ones you want to have held, okay? Very good, yeah. Okay, so, like I said, we're going to go through department by department, and if you want to hold something within that department, just yell "hold," and I'll ask you what number, you tell me the number, and I'll state what the particular item is. Now, another thing, what you're looking at is the third column, where it says fiscal year 19, proposed, fin com, recommended. That's the number that we're going to be voting on, alright? The first two columns were what we approved, two years ago, and what we approved last year. Now, before we get into this, I just want to make a comment. In the past, the amount that a department has requested was also a line item in there. So I'd like to just state, make this for the record, that we put that back in there in the future, please. That way, everybody knows what the department requested, in addition to what was recommended here. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, so, that's not that big a deal, but I just want to make sure people are aware of that. Okay, good. So, you ready to start?
Mr. Moderator, just wanted clarification.
Yes.
In this budget, they're the same number.
They happen to be exactly the same, thank you. In a way, that's what I was hoping someone was going to say to me, because then I'd feel more comfortable with that. Okay, good. So, accounted, 1 through 9. Animal control, 10 through 18. Blackstone Valley Tech, 19 through 24. Board of Sessions, 25 through 36. Board of Health, 37 through 45. Board of Selectment, 46 through 62. Bonding Town Officers, 63 through 66. Cable Advisory, 67 through 72. Capital Budget, 73 through 76. Cemetery Commission, 77 through 82. Code Enforcement, 83 through 91. Conservation Commission, 92 through 97, excuse me, 98. Council on Aging, 99 through 119. Department of Public Works, 120 through 141. Department of Public Works Parks, Forestry, and Cemeteries, 142 through 157. Elections in Town Meetings, 158 through 161. Hold, which number, please?
160.
160 has been held, that's miscellaneous, at the moment, the proposed budget is $15,000. Okay? Emergency Management, 162 through 168. Emergency Medical Services, 169 through 182. Finance Committee, 183 through 187. Fire EMS Department, 188 through 208.
Hold.
Hold, what number?
198, please.
198 was held. General expenses, that number is $30,505. The Civil Commission, 209 through 212. Housing Authority, 213 through 216. Library, 217 through 225. Mendon Regional, 226 through 234.
Hold.
Hold, which number?
227, please.
227 is held. Salaries, 1,750. Miscellaneous, 235 through 241. Moderator, 242 through 247. Municipal Buildings, 248 through 251. Nurse Health Services, 252 through 258. Personnel Board, 259 through 268.
Hold.
Hold, which number?
263, please.
263, longevity bonus, current number is 5,700. Planning Board, 269 through 280. Police Department, 281 through 294. Police Department Communications, 295 through 300. Recreation, 301 through 308.
Hold.
Hold on that, which number?
303.
303, salaries, 1,750. Registrators of Voters, 309 to 314. Town Clerk Assistant to Town Manager, 350 through 322. Town Council, 323 through 326. Treasurer Collector, 327 through 336. Maturing Debt, 337 through 349. Interest Paid, 350 through 362. Trust Fund, 363 through 366. Veterans Services, 367 through 373. 374 through 380 is Waste Removal.
Hold.
Hold, what number?
Not there, but I want to know, we have a water department, they seem here.
Okay.
Article 3.
Now, hang on, that's a, that's a fair question.
Article 3.
Article 3 is the water, right? Oh, so when that comes up, that's when the question needs to be asked, as it seems like.
There is other money to lock in, you have.
Okay, hang on a second. We've got to look at, if you look at Article 3, I know we're not there yet, but just to try to explain the question, that's the Water Enterprise Fund, okay? So that's where the wages, salaries, et cetera, are there, and where the money goes to is there as well. So, if it's a question about water, then Article 3 would be the place to do it, okay? Thank you. Alrighty, so I think we're through.
Is there no budget, or is that...
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
I say, is there no line item budget?
Not anymore, because you have a water enterprise fund. That's where those questions now come in, so, yeah. That was changed six, seven years ago, I think, Mr. Fleming, is that about right? Will we move to that? Okay, yeah.
Yes.
Alright, so, let me just go back real quick. Madam Town Clerk, did you have to lay down all those folds? I did two, but I don't want to flip through every page if I don't have them. Oh, okay, that's all right. We'll, we'll, oh, yeah. While the town clerk is double-checking what was held, we have another non-voter, Baligi, I'll get it, Kirkamol Sami, 23 Dogwood Lane. There's a motion to accept a visitor, is that about right? Great, thank you. Okay, seconded?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. There you go. Okay, 160 or 115?
160.
160 was held. 198 was held. 227 was held. 263 was held, and 303 was held, okay? Great, alright, fine. So, I'd like to now have a vote on accepting everything that's in the budget that wasn't held. Okay, we have a motion, can I have a second on that?
No.
Okay. Favorite recommended decision by the FinCon for everything that wasn't held, right?
Yes.
Thank you. No discussion, because it's by unanimous acceptance. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now, let's look at the held items. 160, okay. 160, whoever had the held, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and ask your question.
Shelley Cook, 23 Men's Street.
Yeah?
So, one thing to say, just Miss Maggie, is I was wondering a couple things, why it had gone so mu, up so much, and also, is this going to be here?
Put your mic down a little bit, and then speak a little louder.
So I was wondering why the amount had gone up so much, and looking at, and looking at past amounts, if we would expect it to go up, down, up, down, if we could maybe get a set lower projection going forward?
Okay, fair, fair question. It looks like two years ago was up, then it went down, up again, Madam Clerk.
Yeah, keep in mind that every two years, we have a state primary and a state election. So, this year for fiscal of 19, we have reelection, state primary, and the governor's race in November, plus the annuals. That's why it goes up and down, because on the, on the second year, we only have the annual town election.
So the presumption is that next year, we're talking to go down again, and then after that, it will go up because of the national election. Okay, got it. So, so that being the case, any more questions on that, or not? So, once you make a motion, if you could, it's up to you. You can make a motion to raise and appropriate $15,000, if you want to, because that's what the amount is. Mr. Flaherty will do it, that's fine, go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, I move we raise the appropriate $15,000 for the purposes of Line 160.
Okay, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Next one? Which, which number was it again?
Number 198.
198, go ahead.
Alright, so this had also gone up significantly.
Closer to the microphone.
Alright, so number 198 had also gone up significantly. I'm wondering if that's just a combination of 177 along with 198, because I noticed that those two had been combined. Again, just a little bit more, I just want to make sure that's where that's coming from.
Fair question, so it looks like it's a combination of things happening, yeah? Chief?
Mr. Moderator, Michael Bradley, Warren Street. That is correct, it's a combination of line items, still level funded, but it also includes Line 177, 194, 195, and 200. All those line items have been collapsed into general expenses.
So it's not just from 177, it's others that have added there too?
That's correct.
Got it, thank you, okay, good. I'll sit then. Okay, Mr. Flaherty?
Mr. Moderator, I move, I move they raise the appropriate $30,505 for the purposes of Line Item 198.
Second?
Second.
Moved in seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Then 227, right?
227.
Yeah.
I was wondering, again, it was likely related to elections as well, why it had gone up, it says 100%, it's not swayed, so it looks like there's nothing there, but so from 1,500 to 1,750.
Right, so it was 1,500, then it went to zero, now it's up to 1,750. Would you question, somebody want to answer that? Moderator? Yes, Mr. Flaherty?
Some years, couple of years ago, we changed the way elected officials were compensated. Members of committees received $500 stipend, and the chairman received $750. These salaries refer to the members of the school committee. These salaries refer to the members of the school committee. Uh. It is up more this year, because chairman will be from up. It swaps off every year.
Okay, good. Uh, I'll sit, okay, great, Mr. Flaherty?
Mr. Moderator, I move we raise appropriate one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for the purposes of line item 227.
Second?
Second.
Moved in seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those who favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
That would be the same explanation for two or three other ones that the lady has held.
Sure. Maybe so, but I'll still let, give you the chance to ask a question or whatever, so. Yeah, go ahead.
Next would be number 263.
Right.
And.
Okay, the ones that are being voted, right. Question?
Um, I was wondering if it was an increase due to the number of people, or if it was an increase due to a higher loan deficit being paid.
Yeah. Anybody got an answer for that? Mr. Brandisi, was, you wanted to check that one or?
The chairman of the personnel board is going to be there, Fisher. Hi, Cynthia Fisher, uh, One Dr. Scott Lane, Upton, Mass. I'm the chairman of the personnel board, so to answer the lady's question. Um, there was an increase this year only due to the fact that the current bylaws in regards to longevity bonuses are that members of the town government, every five years, receive a stipend of 1.5% of their annual salary. It just so happens, a perfect storm, that this year happened to be the number.
Okay.
And that being said, there is an article later on to change how that's all done.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Flaherty?
Mr. Moderator, I move we raise appropriate five thousand seven hundred dollars for the purposes of line 263.
Second, moved in second, any discussions? All those who favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries unanimously. Anything else? Yep, 303, recreation? Um, is it the same type of question? That's fine, great, and if it's the same answer? But, which is fine.
Sad time with the investigation.
Yeah, that's pretty much it, right, exactly. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, um.
Moderator, I move we raise appropriate one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for the purposes of line 303.
Second?
Seconded.
Moved in seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those who favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries unanimously? Now, before we jump, where, I think we're done, right, with that? So we, before we jump to article three, just want to make a quick comment, um. Many, many years ago. This process of going through the budget took hours and hours, okay? Um, we streamlined it, which I think is good. It gets us moving through the process more quickly. But, I just wanted to say to everybody, and especially to the individual who had the questions. It's great to have those questions. That's why we do this. That's why we go through the budget, because if they have a question, now's the time to ask it, okay? And I'll just say this for what it's worth. I don't ever want to go back to the two hours that we used to take, or three hours. But, on the other hand. I don't want to get to the point where we never, ever hold anything. Because what that means is that the checks and balances are not going to be in balance anymore. So, I want to thank the individual, but you had questions, you asked them, we answered them, that's how it works. So don't be afraid to hold something if you don't know why that number is what it is. Don't hold everything though, because then it would take forever. So, it's a balance. It's all I wanted to say, thank you very much, okay, good. Now we're on to article three. The water enterprise fund. So if someone did have a question on that, now would be the time to ask, I suppose. So, thank you, yeah. Mr. Flaherty?
I move, I vote that the town vote to appropriate article three as set forth in the warrant, appropriate funds to operate the Wade Water Enterprise Fund for fiscal year 2019.
For a second?
Seconded.
Moved in seconded, Finance Committee recommendation?
Verbal action, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Yes. Oh, Capital Budget Committee, thank you, sir. That's right.
Ken Gold, working fifteen Hickory Lane, Capital Budget Committee, uh, voted favorably.
Favorable action?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Favorable action by the Capital Budget Committee, since there's a lot of capital budget items in the water enterprise fund. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those who favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries unanimously, article four. Yes, go ahead.
I vote that the town vote to appropriate, approve article four as set forth in the warrant, appropriate funds to operate the Wade Water Enterprise Fund for fiscal year 2019.
Okay, thank you.
Seconded.
Second, moved in seconded, FinCon recommendation?
Verbal action, Mr. Moderator.
CBC recommendation?
Favorable action.
Thank you, any discussion? Alright, seeing none, all those who favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries unanimously, article five, except the motion for article five. Mr. McTann?
Article five. I move that the town vote to approve article five as set forth in the warrant, establishing the annual spending limits for fiscal nineteen. For revolving funds established in section seven of title two, chapter twenty-five of the general bylaws, and for the treasurer collector tax titled revolving fund. Which such expenditure limits could be applicable for each fiscal year until such time as town meeting votes otherwise.
Second?
Seconded.
Moved in seconded, FinCon recommendation?
Verbal action, Mr. Moderator.
Favorable action, before I open it up for discussion, I just want to make a, a point of clarification. In the past, it's usually been like, like a separate article for each one. We've condensed these now into one article listed the way they are, in case you're wondering, it looks different. That's why it looks different, so, question, ma'am?
Um, Lynn Hagerty, ten Southern, ten Southern Mill Lane, Upton.
Yeah.
I have a question about why we're going on recreation from a hundred and sixty-nine thousand to two hundred thousand, near revolving fund.
Fine, thank you, uh, who can answer that question? Recreation Commission, Mr. Brandisi?
Um, the, the main reason is, uh, working with the town council, Recreation Commission. Uh, we've identified that we've been spending a little bit more than the hundred and, I think it was seventy thousand dollars last year. So we're trying to ensure that our budget meets our expenses.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
It, is, is this recreation, the revolving fund, paying for the facilities? Is everything under recreation, is this paying for?
Okay.
Yes, that's true.
That's correct, okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those who favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries by majority, article six. We've got the motion for six, unless we did, we did that already, thank you. Consent calendar, six, seven, and eight. Those were already done. Article nine. Mr. Flaherty?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of five hundred and thirty thousand to be used for construction or improvement of town roads to supplement those provided under the Commonwealth, MGL, chapter ninety program.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded, FinCon recommendation?
Verbal action, Mr. Moderator.
Favorable action? Capital Budget Committee?
Verbal action.
Favorable action, any discussion?
Pamela Goodman, four Parker Avenue. Um, I know this has to do with roads, and so maybe this is irrelevant, but does the trimming of the tree branches that hang over the roads in town, is that included, or is that something separate? I heard at a selectmen's meeting, I watched, that the state highways maybe take care of that, and then, I don't know when the town takes care of what's hanging on, over the cars.
Great, good question, so, does this have anything to do with the trees? I, I don't think so, but the, but Mr. Brandisi, if you could explain?
No, this, this article speaks specifically for, um, road improvements only. The tree branches you've been referring to, I think, uh, in relation to the three norreese's we had. And we've had crews out there for the last few weeks, um, to try to clean up those branches for public safety measures only.
Okay.
So is that something I would just bring up at a selectmen's meeting in the future, like for future reference, for town roads?
Yeah, certainly, we can talk about it, if it comes over the board in open meeting, we can talk about the tree branches. But like I said, I think that crews are cleaning all the hangers for the last three weeks in the community, uh, and if they haven't come to the area, we'll certainly be looking at that for this time as well.
And I could be wrong, but there might be some FEMA might be coming to the state?
We're seeking all reimbursements as possible.
Thank you.
Alright, yes, Mr. Flaherty?
Perhaps I could clarify the lady's question, but if she looks at the forestry line item, that was increased by twenty thousand dollars. Which would be part of it to be used to cut back some of the phonies on the side of the road.
Thank you, Mrs. Flaherty, great. It's in a different department, yes, yes.
David Brooks, three Grandbury Circle. Since we're about to, um, vote to spend over half a million dollars, I wonder if the people who are going to spend, they have in mind a schedule of which roads are going to be fixed first? Maybe too late to be asking that, if that's information that we can find out, or we can ask later.
Yeah, absolutely, so we have a pavement management plan, and we're going to adhere to that pavement management plan. And we can certainly work with our new DPW director, who's in the corner, Dennis Ruske, to identify which roads this year will be paving.
Okay, yeah. Alright, anything else? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries unanimously, article ten. Mr. McTann?
Article ten. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash to a sum of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars to fund the snow and ice deficit for fiscal year 2018.
Second?
Seconded.
Moved in seconded, FinCon recommendation?
Verbal action.
Favorable action, any discussion? Seeing none, all those who favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries unanimously, article eleven.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise appropriate the sum of one hundred thousand dollars to the other post-employment benefits liability trust fund. Established under article forty-two of the two thousand eleven annual town meeting, to meet the town's obligations under the Government Accounting Standards Board, GSAB, GASP, to fund the town's future obligations for the cost of other post-employment benefits identified by the GASP report.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded, FinCon recommendation?
Verbal action.
Favorable action by the FinCon, any discussion? Mr. Robertson?
John Robertson, Mechanic Street. I was wondering, is this going to be a charge every year, or is this just a charge for this fiscal year?
Okay, Mr. Fleming?
Mr. Moderator, the town of Upton's liability right now is in excess of six million dollars over the next ten years. So we are trying to appropriate money as best we can to initiate, to put into that fund, to meet that obligation. Basically, it's other post-employment benefits that we're obligated to meet by state law. So that's why we're putting a hundred thousand, we'd love to put a million, but reasonable is what it is.
And by the way, Mr. Robertson, it's great to see you out of the hospital. Just to let you know, Doug is home with us now, okay? So you can see him there after that. Alrighty, any other questions? Seeing none, all those who favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries unanimously. Article twelve.
Uh, Rita Rich, one twenty-five Westboro Road, article twelve. I move that the town vote to, to raise, to transfer from the fund balance of the Community Preservation Fund the following sums to the specified Community Preservation Fund reserve accounts. To meet the requirements of Mass. Journal Law, chapter forty-four B, section six. For the fiscal year 2018, Historic Resources account, twelve thousand seven hundred and four dollars and sixty cents, Open Space account, twelve thousand seven hundred and four dollars and sixty cents, and Community Housing account, twelve thousand seven hundred and four dollars and sixty cents.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded, FinCon recommendation?
Verbal action.
Favorable action by the FinCon, any discussion? Oh, CPC? Yeah.
Favorable action.
Thank you very much. Favorable action by the CPC. Any other, any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those who favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? Motion carries unanimously, twelve B.
I move that the town vote to act on the report of the Community Preservation Committee on fiscal year 2019, Community Preservation Budget, and appropriate the sum of fifteen thousand dollars from the Community Preservation Fund fiscal year 2019. Estimated annual revenues to the Community Preservation Committee Administrative Expense Account. For all necessary proper administrative expenses of the community for fiscal year 2019.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded, FinCon recommendation?
Verbal action, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, CPC recommendation?
Favorable action.
Very good, any discussion? Seeing none, all those who favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries unanimously, twelve C.
I move that the town vote to transfer from the Community Preservation Fund Historic Resources Reserve, twenty-four hundred, three thousand, thirty-five, ninety-one thousand, the sum of nine, of six thousand dollars. To the Upton Historical Commission for the purchase and installation of four granite posts, to which donated plaques will be attached to indicate the site of four original public schools in Upton. Such funds to be expended by the Upton Historical Commission.
Second?
Seconded.
Moved in seconded, FinCon recommendation?
Verbal action.
CPC recommendation?
Six thousand.
Yes, thank you. Even though the number says nine thousand five hundred, the motion says six thousand, and that is okay, to make that motion to have it be a number less. Okay, any questions? Seeing none, all those who favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries unanimously. Twelve, uh, let's see, the next one is twelve D.
I move that the town vote to transfer from the Community Preservation Fund Undesignated Fund Balance, twenty-four thou- twenty-four hundred, three hundred, thirty-five, ninety-one thousand. The sum of seventeen thousand five hundred dollars to fund a recreation master plan, including all expenses incidental and related, under the supervision of the Recreation Commission, to be completed within one year.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded, uh, Fin, FinCon recommendation?
Verbal action, Mr. Moderator.
CPC recommendation?
Favorable action.
Uh, I just have a point of clarification, if I could. In the article, it says fifty percent of the cost. Is this fifty percent of the cost?
Just, yes.
Okay, because it wasn't in the?
Well, we didn't know initially what the cost was going to be.
Okay, fine. So this amount is for fifty percent?
Yes.
That it says in the article as well, thank you. So I'd like to just make a friendly amendment to the motion to indicate that it is fifty percent of the cost.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any questions? Yes, ma'am?
Another question, Lynn Hagerty, ten Southern Mill Lane.
Yep.
The statement, more or less. So we're going to spend, thirty, we're voting to spend thirty-five thousand on a recreational master plan, when our own master plan is thirteen years on today. So we're looking at the smaller picture. And my last part of the statement is that we still have issues we need to fix at Kiwanis, and we're going to spend thirty-five thousand on a master plan for recreation. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comment or discussion? Yes, ma'am? Close, come close, please.
Marshas Castle, ten Mickey Lane. What, what's actually included in this master plan?
Good question.
I mean.
Yeah, that's a fair question.
We have a lot of land, are they going to include perk tests, or is it?
Okay.
What is it, what is it?
Could, could someone, um, explain? Summarize, what is the master plan? Mr. Gazorian?
Rich Gazorian, five Wyre Lane. Can a guest come up and address this, because he's the most knowledgeable person above all this?
Sure, if, if he's the person who can answer the question, absolutely, thank you, yeah.
Andrew St. George, Recreation Director, for the town. Uh, the master plan is going to be looking at, um, all of the recreational facilities, uh, including the elements involving Kiwanis that have been identified as, uh, having ADA compliance issues. Uh, as well as looking at other existing facilities that we have. Uh, looking at the needs of the town in terms of, uh, in terms of field use, uh, in terms of other recreational programs, people would like to see other facilities, people would like to see. I was going to give a comprehensive analysis of what is needed, and what is the best and most appropriate way to move forward, uh, which is, uh, you know, some, some of the, uh, some of the things that have been brought by Kiwanis. Um, may have, you know, complications and price packs associated with them, so we want to make sure that before we just start throwing money at things, that we're having a, a good comprehensive plan in place. To use the resources responsibly.
Thank you very much. Any other discussions? As someone else is coming up, I just want to make a quick parliamentary note. In my zest to be precise about the mathematics, we're not going to put the fifty percent in there, in case it may not be at the total of fifty, thirty-five. So it could be less than that, so we're not going to say fifty percent, it's just not going to be the entire amount. Just to clarify that, so, thank you. Ma'am?
Uh, Donna Murray, ten Henry's Path. So we've spent five hundred and forty-five thousand on Kiwanis Beach since two thousand and ten. and ten, and we still have a lot of problems at Kiwanis Beach. I'm just wondering, are we just like spending this money, kicking the can down the road, saving ourselves a year, instead of spending the time to come up with a new master plan for the whole town, with our new town manager, and move the town forward, because we're, seventeen-five is not going to fix the problems that need to be fixed in, in, at Kiwanis Beach. So I, I'd like to make that, just make that say.
Mr. Gazorian?
Yes, um, one of the things that we, uh, that this master plan will do, it was, it will allow us to apply from any grants, and one of the requirements for a lot of the grants is, do you have a recreation master plan? And so whether it's going to fix ADA issues, they'll want to know, do you have a recreation master plan? So this is imperative that we do this. This is not furthered by any way, shape, or form, and it is important that we pass this. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Lynn Hagerty, ten Sudden Lane. Yes, this amount, part of this, this is part of a small master plan you can apply for funds. However, the big picture is, if the town had a master plan, and the town had a transition plan, you can apply for state and federal funds. So that's the bigger picture here. And I don't believe this master plan is going to give you anything on ADA compliance, because we already have a transition plan for a small part, Kiwanis, and that tells us what we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm at Fort Hartford Avenue. I just want to say that my son-in-law is a coach, and he carried an injured girl down the hill on his, like, piggyback up there playing soccer. And I also attended the other meeting where we talked about walkers and wheelchairs on gravel, and as a former CNA, I was like, what are people thinking?
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Gazorian?
Um, yes, our town master plan, uh, should be redone. That was on the original master plan committee, and, uh, yes, it needs to be done. However, if you look at the original master plan, it doesn't go in-depth into what recreation does. This is going to give us an in-depth analysis, it's going to cover ADA issues, it's going to establish what we need to do, so that's why it's important. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Edward Perez.
A little closer, a little closer this way.
How's that?
Very good.
Okay. And, uh, just one comment on one of the speakers before me.
Yeah.
Um, mentioned a little bit about Kiwanis Beach project thing. Um, there has been an itemized, beautiful plan of what needs to be done regarding Kiwanis Beach corrections, so that it meets what we're supposed to meet. As far as a grand master plan for just the recreation, I think that's a good idea, but I think that should have been done a long time ago, because what has happened is, right now, Kiwanis Beach is overloaded, but I'm happy. I'm not complaining, it's a done deal, but you can't just leave it like it is. So I'd rather the money go towards that first, so it shows that from here on in, no matter what kind of master plan comes forward, it will always be that the ADA is taken into consideration. And in addition to that, I think that, uh, I don't know and understand the transition plan, but if that's what we need to be able to do what other towns do, to get the most and the best money from the state and the federal government, because we do contribute money into that, then we need to start there. And maybe what we can do is, instead of giving the money right now, or allotting the money right now for the recreation master plan, go in the recreation department, um, activities as they are now for this summer, uh, maybe further down the line, when we see what's really needed, we can go there. One of the things that I have is a personal complaint, and I'm not complaining because of, you know, wanting to throw daggers. But our, our town prior has in it full-page colorful ads for the camps. We could have a small, we don't need a thousand-plus-dollar ad. So if the money is going to things like that, then I don't think we should be spending money on a master plan. I think we should be going to the transition for the whole town. What about the Holy Angels Church thing? What about so many other things? Let's pull it together and get somebody to go, to do that first.
Mr. Moderator?
Uh, hang on.
Can I address some of the comments that have been made?
You, you can certainly do that, sure.
Um, so, I've heard a little bit about master planning for the town, a little bit of master planning for recreation, so two things, there's a difference here. So, first and foremost, the board of selectmen, they just executed a contract this past Tuesday at their, uh, monthly meeting, uh, for a thirty thousand dollar grant with Central Master Regional Planning Committee. That grant is the grant we've talked about for the last six months, that's going to allow us to work with our new economic development committee to develop an economic development plan for the townwide, townwide, so thinking about what we want to do in the downtown revitalization project, what are some of the zones that we want to create or not create, um, as far as, um, mixed-use zoning, so on and so forth. That is very different than what we're talking about this evening around the, uh, master plan for recreation. In a few, in a few articles, you're going to hear a little bit about accepting land from Mr. Javi Trask, who left thirty thousand dollars for recreation purposes. This master plan is going to focus, um, its energy on Kiwanis Beach and the Javi Trask man, and to really try to understand, what does the town need for recreational resources? It also does include ADA accessibility, but it's a more comprehensive planning, uh, strategy around recreation, uh, as a whole, not just focused on ADA issues. And again, so I just want clarity on that, we're going to have two different planning processes that are going to take place for the better part of, uh, six to twelve months over the next year or so.
Thank you.
Brett Simas, seven Barber's Path. Uh, thank you to the town manager, that was a great recap. I was going to mention the Trask Land coming up, so we've got a significant donation of land that's coming up. This plan will help us support that and be mindful in how we're going to be using the land and the resources around the town. Nobody likes to spend money on doing plans, it's always hard for people to get their heads around what feels like an administrative process. I do think we need to do another master plan, everybody agrees with that, I haven't talked to anybody that disagrees, it's been thirteen years. I think having a RECON plan as well is important, I think having an accessibility transition plan is important. All these things cost a little bit of money, but if you're going to be planful in the town, you're going to think about the long run, you're going to make these logical investments, you've got to have a plan, we've got a new town, new town manager, we've got a great people, great group of people in the town that are willing to move these things forward, but we can't just keep following our noses around where it leads, we've got to have some of these plans together. And the key part of having any of these plans, like we saw with the master plan in two thousand and five, got to work together as a community, we've got to bring everybody together to move these things forward and execute what's actually in the plan, as opposed to just doing the plan, getting funding, and not making progress. And I think if we work together, we can do that.
Thank you. Mr. McTannan?
I'd like to move a question.
There's been a motion, move a question, and what that means is that you've heard enough about this, you want to vote to move a question. If two-thirds of you have heard enough, then we will then vote on the question. So this, so I'm going to ask you right now, isn't it the voting of questions, it's the vote to say that you're done talking about. Clear on that? Great, so, all those in favor of moving the question signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no?
No.
Motion carries by two-thirds majority to move the question. Now we will vote on the question. So, this is about spending seventeen thousand five hundred as part of the money for a master plan. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Out of CPC money, uh, for a, uh...
Recreation.
For recreation. Thank you very much, okay? Um, and that's what we've been talking about for the past fifteen to twenty minutes. You've heard reasons to do it, you've heard reasons not to do it. Think about that within the next two or three seconds, because that's what I'm going to ask you to vote on. Okay, so, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no?
No.
The motion carries by majority. Article thirteen.
Phil Taylor, two-eleven North Street. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-one thousand eight hundred dollars for use by the Board of Assessors to contract for measure and list services and the sum of eleven thousand dollars for ongoing recertification.
Okay, so seconded, seconded, FinCom recommendation?
Favorable action, Mr. Moderator.
Favorable action by the FinCom, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no? Motion carries unanimously. Article fourteen.
Mike Panko on Brackton Road. I move that the town vote, vote to raise and appropriate the sum of five thousand dollars to supplement the town's conservation fund.
Second?
Second.
Moved in seconded, FinCom recommendation?
Favorable action.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no? Motion carries unanimously. Article fifteen.
Phil Disutter, uh, one seventy-seven East Street. Oh, there's a... So, I move that the town vote pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter seventy-one, Section sixteen G and a half, to approve the establishment by the Mendenham Regional School District of a capital stabilization fund, consistent with the vote of the MURSD School Committee, provided that in order for the MURSD to create said fund, approval must be given by the Mendenham Town Meeting, and further that any money budgeted by the MURSD to be included in said fund may be expended only by a two-thirds vote of the MURSD School Committee, for any purposes for which the school district can borrow, or for such other purposes, as may be authorized by the Commissioner and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Moved in seconded. Um, FinCom, do you have a recommendation on this?
Favorable action, Mr. Moderator.
Favorable action, thank you by the FinCom. And just to double check with town council, since this is creating a stabilization, it only requires a majority vote, correct?
Authorizing the creation of a stabilization plan.
Right.
But it's, yeah, so it's just a majority vote.
Just a majority vote. It's not like we're taking money in and out, it requires two-thirds, but authorized. Good. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no? Motion carries unanimously. Article sixteen.
Article sixteen. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of one hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars for the purchase and equipping of a five-ton dump truck for the Department of Public Works.
Seconded. Moved in seconded, FinCom recommendation, Mr. McTannan?
Favorable action, Mr. Moderator.
Favorable action by the FinCom, any, uh, capital budget committee?
Favorable action.
Favorable action by the capital budget, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no? Motion carries by majority. Article seventeen.
Article seventeen?
Yep.
I move that the town vote to amend the General Bylaws, Section one of Chapter nine, Capital Budget Committee, with underlying text to be inserted and text to be deleted shown with strike through, as printed in the warrant under Article seventeen, provided, however, that any incumbent members of the Capital Budget Committee appointed by the Finance Committee shall serve for the remainder, uh, remainder of their respective four-year appointed term or sooner vacating of office.
Second?
Seconded.
Moved in seconded, um, I don't know if Finance Committee has an opinion, or even if Capital Budget Committee has an opinion on this, it involves you in direct manner, but, okay. So essentially, we're talking about having the Board of Selectmen appoint people instead of the FinCom.
That's correct. As it stands now, the Board of Selectmen do not have any appointments to the Capital Budget Committee. So we're looking to make this modification or amendment, so that the Board of Selectmen would therefore hold appointments to that.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no? Motion carries then, Article eighteen.
Phil Taylor, North Street. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of three thousand five hundred dollars for the purchase of software for downloading the permitting to the Board of Assessors program, including all incidental and related expenses.
Second?
Seconded.
Moved in seconded, FinCom recommendation?
Favorable action.
Favorable action by the FinCom, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no? Motion carries unanimously, nineteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept Kiwanis Beach Road as a public way, as laid out by the Board of Selectmen and shown on a plan entitled G nine-nine-four-eight, proposed Kiwanis Beach Road for town acceptance as built fifty scale. On file with the town clerk and authorized the Board of Selectmen to acquire, by gift, purchase, and/or eminent domain, the fee to and/or all these events in such way as shown on the air, air, air force said plan, for all purposes for which public funds are used in the Town of Upton, in any drainage, utility access, or other related duties.
Second? Moved in seconded, um, this requires a two-thirds majority vote. Um, I do have a question, uh, do we need any recommendation from the planning board on this?
Mr. Moderator, Paul Carey, six seventh Way, a member of the planning board. Uh, the planning board vote was that although this is not, uh, a, a road that up to town standards, it may be in the best interest of the town to acquire the road and make it a town road.
Okay, thank you. So that mean, does that mean favorable, or would you, are you not saying that?
That's pretty non-normative.
That's pretty non-normative. There are a lot of benefits to, 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 uh, the town owning the road, it just is not a town that would pass town standards today.
Okay, right. Any discussion?
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay, so, we'll see, there is a question? Hold on a minute.
Great wine plus D is a planned route. Um, I was just wondering if you could discuss the positives and negatives of purchasing a road, um, I'm not familiar with it.
So, it's not to purchase the road, it's for the town to accept the road, so, okay. Mr. McTannan?
Yes, normally the Town of Upton wouldn't accept a road such as this under the condition, but the reality is, the people, the persons that presently own the road, the landowners that have control of that property are not obligated to fix the road, and that road could deteriorate, and the town has no recourse whatsoever. Uh, where it does access a public facility for the Town of Upton, primarily with consideration for emergency access, consider it is a beach area, definitely want an fast emergency access, it would behoove the town to accept that road to keep it upgraded to the standards that would provide public safety and access to our facilities.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Keep in mind, it does require a two-thirds majority vote, okay? So, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no? Motion carries unanimously. Article twenty.
Phil Taylor. I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, Clause seventeen E, that provides annual adjustments equal to the increase in the Consumer Price Index to the amount of the whole estate, real and personal limitation, set forth in Clause, Clause seventeen, seventeen C, seventeen C and a half, and seventeen D exemptions, and to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, Clause forty-one D, that provides annual adjustments equal to the increases in the Consumer Price Index to the gross receipts and whole estate, real and personal, limitation set forth in Clause forty-one, forty-one B, and forty-one C exemptions.
Second? Moved in seconded. FinCom, do you have any recommendation on this?
No.
No? Any questions? Mr. Robertson, thank you.
Mr. Ra, uh, Moderator, could you please have this translated into English?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Robertson, because if no one had a question, I was going to look out there and say, come on, everybody doesn't understand this, do they? Okay, thank you, Mr. Robertson. Mr. Taylor, go ahead.
Uh, there's, um, this is primarily related to exemptions, you know, property tax exemptions for seniors. And right now, the, uh, limits, or the ceilings that, for eligibility for income and assets are fixed, and what this does is it permits annual adjustments to those currently fixed, uh, eligibility limits, uh, so that as your, for example, social security, social security income increases, you don't end up basically getting priced out of these. social security income increases, you don't end up basically getting priced out of these exemptions.
So, so it essentially makes adjustments for inflation and things like that all the time?
Yes, absolutely right.
Okay, very good. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor, uh, this requires just a majority vote, correct?
Majority.
Thank you, yeah. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close no, motion carries unanimously, Article 21. Mr. Carey?
Mr. Moderator, Paul Carey, 6th Avenue's Way, a member of the Planning Board, I move that we pass over Article 21.
Second?
Second.
Moved in seconded to pass over Article 21. Okay, that's fine. Um, any, well, the move is to pass over, any questions on that?
Why?
Why?
You know, I knew that was gonna happen, so, but I thought I'd ask anyway, Mr. Carey, go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, uh, we did have a public hearing on, on the bylaw, uh, and had favorable action on it, however, after that meeting and before, and after the warrant closed, we did get significant changes from the Town Council, and we felt that it would not be appropriate to try and, uh, bring those changes before the body tonight, um, they're significant, and really, I'd have to read the whole article out, and, and people wouldn't have a chance to read it out, so we asked that it be moved, uh, passed over, and we'll, uh, we'll address it at a later date.
So it will be addressed at a later date, unless that's the plan?
That is the plan.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Yes, sir.
Uh, similar question, will it be addressed at a town meeting or a board meeting?
It will be at a town meeting ultimately, correct? Right, so probably it'll go to other boards first, but eventually it will come to a town vote. Good, good question. So again, the motion is to pass over, which means that we're not gonna deal with it tonight. So any questions you have is why, why would we wanna pass over, so go ahead.
I just was wondering, if it is at a town meeting, um, would it be, would we general publicly notified in, like, say, the town prior, rather than having to refer to the website to figure out this special town meeting? Like, publication, what's the best way to let us know, suppose we don't have a computer?
Fair, fair question, um, Derek, yeah?
So like, any bylaw change, uh, in this case, zoning change, the Planning Board's gonna hold a public hearing, the community can put on notice, could attend that public hearing, like they did the first time around, um, so after the public hearing, we would then advance, um, that amendment to, um, to the fall town meeting, and keep in mind, in this past November, um, the, the town meeting members had, uh, passed a moratorium on recreational marijuana, which ends in December, so we fully anticipate to have not only medicinal marijuana, uh, bylaw in front of, um, the town meeting, but also recreational as well as coming forward.
And, and just as a point of clarification, in any town meeting which occurs, that's not an annual town meeting, requires two weeks' notice, requires posting at the town hall, library, post office, so on and so forth, so it will be just like any town meeting?
Right, and the last time I checked, the Yankee Express is not delivering to Upton anymore, so I just wanted to, um, thank you for that.
Okay, thank you, yeah. All righty, any other questions about passing over? Okay, so if you vote yes, it means you wanna pass over, and they say it will be dealt with later, if you don't wanna pass over, you can vote no, but I don't know what would happen if you did that, so, all those in favor of passing over, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close no, motion carries unanimously to pass over, 21, 22.
Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Moderator, Nate Fisher again, uh, Article 22, I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Chapter 33, Section 59 of Mass General Law, allowing the town of Upton to provide its employees military leave with pay and without loss of ordinary remuneration as set forth in the statute, and to amend the personnel bylaws, Title IX, Section 1, Subsection 3, military leave as set forth in the handout we were provided this evening.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Moved in seconded, Deborah Catt, please.
Sorry.
Right, thank you. Okay, doesn't look like there's anything financial, oh no, there is some financial ramifications, FinCom?
Favorable action, Mr. Moderator.
Favorable action by the FinCom, any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close no, motion carries unanimously, Article 323.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the last paragraph of General Law, Chapter 41, Section 111F, to create two special funds to be known as the Police and Fire Injury Leave Indemnity Fund, and to be expended by the Board of Selectmen without further appropriation for payment of injury leave compensation or medical bills incurred under General Law, Chapter 41, Section 111F, or 100, to which appropriations may be made, and amounts received from insurance proceeds to restitution for inju- injuries, the firefighters and police officers, shall be credited, provided further than said would may, if the amounts therein are not immediately necessary or required in the foreseeable future, release specific amounts to the town or plan.
Second?
Second.
Moved in seconded, um, FinCom recommendation?
Favorable action.
Favorable action by the FinCom, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close no, motion carries unanimously, Article 24.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $8,500 to hire a consultant to investigate and provide a report on the conditions of the roof at the police and fire station, including all incidentals related to this expense.
Second?
Second.
Moved in seconded, FinCom recommendation?
Favorable action, Mr. Moderator.
Favorable action, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close no, motion carries by majority, 25.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote authorized the Board of Selectmen to accept on behalf of the town of Upton, two parcels of land, and any improvements therein, being map 25, lot 25, 142 Mended Street, and map 25, lot 2, Zero Mended Street, from the Javi J. Trask Trust, dated May 2nd, May 2015, in accordance with Article 3, Paragraph 1 of said trust, for the purpose of a park, recreation, and athletic facility to be known as the Javi Julian Trask Park, and/or for the purpose of a school building site, or any such building to be constructed therein, to be known as the Teresa Julian Trask School.
Second? Moved in seconded, um, Finance Committee, do you have any recommendation on this?
We did, Mr. Moderator.
That's, that's okay, if you don't, that's fine. Any other committee need a recommendation or not? No? Okay, so, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close no, motion carries unanimously, 26.
Good evening again, Article 26, I move that the town vote to amend personnel bylaws as set forth in the handout we were provided this evening.
Thank you, so, uh, is there a second?
Second.
Good, good, so, give, give a card on that, again, so, yeah, if you could just...
I think I've learned.
That's all right, so, just give us a, a quick summary, since there's lots of cross outs and so on.
Sure. So, Article 26, um, the Personnel Board is tasked every five years with going through and reviewing through the personnel bylaws as set forth, um, we have reviewed through the personnel bylaws and have come to a certain set of changes that need to, we feel need to be made. Uh, the changes are as follows, the first of which is the longevity program. The longevity program was not very specific in regards to how it was, and following the guidelines as to what other towns did, we felt that the longevity bonuses, as they were, should be moved to individual boards, and set forth, uh, by the Personnel Board to state what they should be. Um, so what we've done is, uh, moved the longevity bonuses to a higher schedule, where you were required to be a town employee for 10 years before you become, uh, eligible for the bonuses, and rather than a set percentage every five years, as it is now, allowing for a more stable approach to the personnel bylaws, um, you now receive a certain amount tasked to you each year, so, and these numbers shall be moved to the individual committees, uh, in a button.
Yeah.
If you wanna go one by one and see if you have questions, or just go through everything?
Well, we're gonna vote on, on the whole thing, so if you could just summarize it, whatever, however you feel we should.
Not a problem. Uh, the second item that was, uh, was reviewed was the meritorious bonus program, uh, the meritorious bonus program was a set aside of $5,000 each year, that was set aside for individual employees who were at the recommendation of their managers and the department would receive a one-time bonus, that was supposed to be for anything that was above and beyond the call of duty of their job. Um, after reviewing through this information, we felt it best that the individual committees be responsible for this, and not a civilian board, uh, to come to it, um, we're still there to make any recommendations or adjustments to individual salaries that are out there, but rather than have a $5,000 fund, if you will, that sat there and according to this year, never got used, um, we just felt it was better just to give them back to the town.
Okay.
Okay, um, and the third item that was on there, in our cost-saving maneuver this year, uh, was the screening physicals. As it stands now, the non-union personnel, uh, in the town, uh, this would be the administrative assistants, the town clerks, and everyone else, um, are required to receive the same physical, uh, that the police department, or the, the DPW, or the fire department does. Uh, so we felt that this was overburdened on the town, uh, to do like a full physical, you know, it was one thing to be a police officer, and to do what they had to do, but it's another thing to be held to those same high physical standards to sit behind a desk all day long, so, uh, so what we said from that perspective is that the Personnel Board is going to review through as part of their Compensation Committee review for the end of the year, to make the determination of what level of physical was going to be required, uh, for each category of employee that was non-union. The remainder of the union employees that are out there are covered by the CBA, that are in there as to what type of physical they're required.
Okay, good question, thank you. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close no, motion carries unanimously, Article 27.
Article 27?
Yep.
I move that the town vote to accept as public ways, Blueberry Lane and Dogwood Drive, as laid out by the Board of Selectmen according to a plan on file with the town clerk, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift, purchase, and/or eminent domain, the fee to and/or easements in such way as shown on the Air Force Said Plan, for all purposes for which public ways are used in the town of Upton, namely drainage, utility access, or other related easements.
Moved in seconded, but, um...
Now, these are the two new roads off of Plains Street, so that folks know.
Thank you, and before, I, um, question for Town Council, does this require two-thirds or civil majority?
Just a majority, that's how I, the majority...
Could you briefly explain why, if that's okay? It seems like it's the same thing, but there are differences, right?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, the reason being that these ways are on an approved subdivision plan, and under state law, if they're on an approved subdivision plan, it's a majority vote.
Great, thank you very much, okay, now, Mr. Carey, is there a Planning Board recommendation? Then I'll open up to a question. Favorable recommendation by the Planning Board, may I?
Hi, Cindy Alexander, 7 Dogwood Drive, um, I'm just, I have a direct question for all of us, um, there were a couple of things that, uh, were just, uh, the town came down with Eastland to look over the property and, and inspect and see what needed to be changed. One of the things was, uh, there was a standing puddle at the intersection of Dogwood and Blueberry, and they did come down and patch it, but it looks like they basically dumped the asphalt down and ran it over a couple times to throw it away, like, previously, when they, when they patched it, they've like gone over and sealed the thing, so I'm not sure, I'm not sure the town's willing to take responsibility of that, or if it's something that Eastland needs to, um, handle before, before the road is actually accepted. Another issue I have is, um, where they've just gone through and checked out all the drainage and cleaned out these ditches, one happens to be right beside my house, um, is the town gonna come around regularly and re-whack it and clean it out, um, because it's not really my property, it's halfway, uh, I'm only halfway across the ditch, um, and finally, there is a box in the ditch that I have, that, um, on one pipe, they dump rock to, I, I guess, allow the earth not to be disturbed when the water comes running off the road, but there's another box with a hole in it, and there's no rock there, and I see all kinds of vegetation going through that, that box all the time, so I just wanna make sure that's not gonna be something that backs up on my property.
So, if, if I can, there's some, still some things that maybe you think the builders need to take care of, and if we accept this, then where does that responsibility lay?
Right, yeah.
Okay, fine, fair question, I want to try to address that, um, Mr. Carey?
Mr. Moderator, the, the Planning Board is still holding a bond from the developer, uh, to handle certain punch items like that, and one of the things that we did want them to do was handle that puddle.
Yep.
They said they, they have, they want to get their bond back until we believe that it's already done, um, and with respect to catch bases and things like that that are in the public way, I believe the town, um, you know, will have a meeting and explain things like that, just like with every public road.
Okay. Questions?
I'm not so much worried about, like, the, the regular upkeep, but rather of that box on my property.
Right.
But rather the, um, the fact that it's, it's set up properly to begin with, that it's, you know, that, that it's, the hole is being blocked from weeds and stuff going through it, 'cause I don't know where that, where that goes, but it's some kind of distribution box or something, it looks like, so...
So, so, Mr. Carey, if, if things aren't quite up to snuff, according to the Planning Board, you've got that bond you can hold over the company, not just for the puddle, but for the other things as well?
That, that's correct, we are holding a bond, it's, it, our reviewing engineer worked with Eastland, come up with what they thought was an appropriate bond for remaining items, the remaining things that are unfinished, and also, we generally hold 10% back, even after all the punch list items are done for a year, to make sure that the, the roads are in, are in good shape, so, you know, if any of the residents have issues, they should still come to the Planning Board and let us know about them, because we eventually will ask them to step on.
So it sounds like talk to him and take care of that. Good question. All righty, anything else on that? All righty, um, so, Article 27 to accept Blueberry Lane and Dogwood, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close no, motion carries unanimously, Article 28.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $80,000 to be added to the funds already approved under Article 5 of the 2017 Annual Town Meeting, for the purposes of supplementing the 2018 department expenses as follows, fire department wages $60,000, police department wages $20,000.
Favorable action, Mr. Moderator.
Second?
Second.
Favorable action by the FinCom, so, the number is, is not the 120 that's on the article, it's 80,000 total, thank you, 60 for fire, 20,000 for police, okay, thank you. Any discussion on that? Mr. Robinson?
Richard Robinson, 177 East Street, Mr. Moderator, could you get a description of what's included in $60,000 to the fire department?
Okay, could it be given, some way of the 60 grand? That's from the fire, right? Okay?
The $60,000 is for personnel changes and some IOD expenses.
Okay, so I guess there were changes in personnel?
Does that include the, uh, town's buyout of the chief's contract?
Mr. Brandisi?
Um, that would include the chief's buy, yes.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion from Article 28 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close no?
No.
Motion carries by majority, now, before we have a motion to adjourn the meeting, I just have a couple of comments to make. By the way, the meeting went great, thank you very much, everybody, yes, good questions, you got good answers, there's one article that we had a lot to talk about, which is great, and that's wonderful. Um, tonight is the last night, uh, for Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Robert Fleming, so I just wanna say a couple of things about Mr. Fleming before we have the motion to adjourn. First time I met Mr. Fleming was when I was soccer coach for his daughter, I don't wanna say how many years ago, you know how old she is now and how old she was then, it's a long time ago. This man's been involved in this town in a number of different ways, uh, 25-plus years as a Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, and in many other ways as well. I've worked with a lot of selectmen, he's right there at the top, despite his prime concern as a person who cares about the community, says what he has to say, he doesn't mind if you don't necessarily agree with him, he's gonna tell you what's on his mind, and he's gonna do what he thinks is the best for the community, that's all we can ask for, for our citizens who get involved with this stuff, so, Mr. Fleming, thank you very much.
I would like to say one thing, and I, you know, those that know me know I'm very transparent, but, for all the time I've been on the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, there have been those citizens that have continuously had issues with their tax rate, and you are the people I... the people I thank, because you are the people, every town meeting I come here, there are just over a hundred people here tonight, out of a population of almost eight thousand, so five thousand voters that come close to telling forty-eight hundred, and you people are voting the budget, you determine what the tax rate is, and I see the same faces at every town meeting. So you are the ones I wanna thank, and it's been a pleasure, I've enjoyed it, yes, I've had my bumps, but I love this town. Thank you very much.
I will now entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Robinson?
I move that we dissolve this warrant and adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no, motion carries unanimously. Come on, everybody, thank you.